I'd like to call the Capitola City Council meeting to order and welcome all of you here tonight. Thank you all for being here in person and thank you all at home that are watching and thank you those who are going to watch it delayed on Saturday morning. This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications, cable TV, Channel 8 and AT&amp;T, U-verse, Channel 99, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following the broadcast at 1:00, on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website, if you want to go to the city's website, www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is either Alex, or Scott, or Victor. Thank you very much for working here and being here and bringing this program to the public, and as a reminder, everyone, please turn off your cell phones and when you come up to speak, if you want your name in the record, please sign in, especially if you want your name recorded correctly. So with that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, please, I'm sorry, roll call.
Council members Peterson.
Here.
Termini.
Here.
Bertrand.
Here.
Baudor.
Here.
And Mayor Harland.
Here. Well, everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I share your agenda? Thank you. First item tonight, we have presentation, so would the presenters like to come up, please? And I think they're going to do this, all of us?
Both.
You and I?
Oh, awesome.
Not me.
First officer, one night.
Firefighter, technically.
I got all four of you over here.
I've actually done it before.
There's a trick, see? He'll make us all look bad.
University locker.
We have a, no, Ed, stay here. We have a wonderful presentation tonight. This is some of our very, very most special things, besides proclamations and all of those wonderful things, the best things are checks, and we have these big checks that are really, really important to the community. They represent a lot of hard work on everybody's part, all the volunteers, all the board members, all the community members, couldn't do it without all of you. You are so wonderful, all of you, for doing everything you do, and I just want to thank you, and turn it over to Mike for some words.
As a president of the Capitola Safety Foundation, I want to present you with this check for $2,500. This is for Operation Surf. You do us the honor of coming here every year, and this is the least we can do, is give you this.
We can't thank you enough. You know, we love coming to Capitola. I mean, it's one of our favorite places during the event, the way we're treated from the businesses, the community, all of you guys, it's just phenomenal, and we want to thank you.
We have the best weather.
You do.
Wind waves.
Don't be the worst.
Would the other members like to say anything?
Best Safety Foundation, too.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
of your wonderful work for many, many, many years, and I'm retired now, so if you need another volunteer at the golf tournament, call me.
You got it, done.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Next item is a report on closed session, please. Mr. Condon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harland, members of the city council. We had three items on this evening's closed session. The first was a public employee performance evaluation of the city manager. We also had two items of existing litigation, the case of City of Capitola versus Water Rock Construction, Inc., and the case of City of Capitola versus DeAngelo. The council received a status report from the city attorney on those items, and there was no reportable action this evening.
Thank you very much. Additional materials?
No additional material.
Thank you. Additions and deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes.
Then this is time for public comments. If anyone would like to address us on any item not on the agenda, this is the time, if you want to speak on something on the agenda, please wait till we get there, and you're welcome to speak even if it doesn't say public hearing. So, public comments? Council comments? Ed, do you have anything?
Yeah. I have some comments, a couple of things that I did this week, and I think Mike's going to follow up on something that we did jointly, and part of an ad hoc committee on governance for homelessness, and I have to admit that we've gotten to the point where we realized that this is a shared responsibility for our community. I think a lot of us are aware that there are people less fortunate than us, and this is the start of a process to try to figure out how Santa Cruz as a community, the whole of us, cities and county, can deal with the issues. There's many levels to it, and, you know, I shouldn't be talking about that right now because I don't understand it clearly. I'm actually learning quite a bit. So many people are working on this, but this is the start of a process to get to a point where we recognize it is a joint responsibility for this community. Thank you.
Mike, turn it.
I do. First of all, this week marks the approval by the lifeguard association of our junior guard program, so we are now certified, is that correct?
Chartered.
Fully chartered, so we can compete and beat every other junior guard chapter in the state, just saying that.
And we do.
And we do. There will be a fire safety program being done by the Red Cross at Aptos Knolls, I know it's not Capitola, but it's nearby, where you go in, the Red Cross goes in and provides smoke detectors in all the coaches, free of charge, and any volunteers who would like to participate, it is on April 22nd on a Saturday, and if you call the local Red Cross office, they will put you to work. There's also something that came to me, and I don't know if it came to the other council members, but there's a push by some of the local basketball players, they'd really like us to pay attention to Jade Street Basketball Courts. So if it's, if we have a consensus to bring it to the council at a future date, it would be nice to put it on the agenda at some time.
Thank you.
Good. And last but not least, 11 o'clock this Saturday, right here in Capitola, you ladies and gentlemen get to hobnob with the Easter Bunny. The Easter Bunny is on our beach, and there will be an Easter egg hunt.
Rain or shine?
There is never rain when the Easter Bunny is on the beach, just saying. It may be a little too hot, but it's, there's never rain, and there will be several thousand eggs buried in the sand, which will be instantly discovered by the children of Capitola and the outer regions, and the fact that they can find those eggs so quickly means that children can find things when they tell their mom they can't find them. There's stuff out there, so come on down, 11 o'clock, Saturday, and the Easter Bunny will see you then.
Kristen, do you have anything?
I have nothing today.
I have a couple of Chamber of Commerce things. I attended their lunch this week, and they passed out some interesting materials. This is a copy of an ad that appeared in a Scottish newspaper. California's soul, culture, nature, sand, sea, surf, coastal gems, Santa Cruz is a must-see picture of the Venetian court, Capitola. So, going to pass this around, so start down there. And then they passed out some copies of their pages from their online magazine that they have, and if you go to their site, you can go through the, you can go through the, you've probably seen a lot of magazines, it turns, you can turn the pages, so you can go page by page, and so you can get a chance to see all the pages in Capitola that they feature for us. The magazine, they print 120,000 copies of their magazine, they're distributed predominantly outside the county, predominantly in Sacramento Central Valley, San Jose, Stockton area, and then they do a tremendous amount of advertising and hosting tour writers, and so that's what they did with this article, they had a tour writer from Scotland, and they winded and dined her or him or them, and they just loved Capitola, and they wrote this great story about it with these great pictures, and that's how you get, that's, I said, we're seeing more and more foreign visitors here, when you, from working in city, volunteering in the museum, you see them, all languages during the summer, all kinds of languages, and it's wonderful. So, anyway, this is, this one is especially interesting, it's called Eight Cool California Piers, paddle your way through this idyllic waterfront village near Santa Cruz. Capitola Wharf. So, anyway, her report was that tourism is up, room occupancy is up, things are going in the right direction, and they have for the last couple of years, that they're expecting about, if I'm correct, an increase of about 25% new rooms in Santa Cruz County, and even with that, they think that there is going to be enough business because some of the newer ones are a little more higher end, and people like that, and so the satisfaction is a little higher, and TOTs a little more, and it was all good news, good news.
And, Madam Mayor, if I might, it was through the efforts of Larry and Jamie and working with the, so many different organizations, the fire departments, the lifeguard associations, the parents' club, they're the ones that put in, but, you know, Jacques and I just attended one meeting and pontificated, but you guys really put in the time, thank you.
Great. And the other thing is, we get invitations and emails for ribbon cutting ceremonies, and I just want to make sure all the council members feel absolutely welcome to come. It's not just for the mayor or the vice mayor, who's ever cut in the room, it's for all of us, they like to see all of us there, and please feel, you know, welcome to come, we hardly ever talk about that, but there's one coming up next week on Tuesday at Brown Ranch, they're having a reopening, rededication of a Japanese restaurant called Wasabi Sushi, and I hear great raves about that, so, anyway, please feel free to come.
What time is that ribbon cutting?
4:00, 4:00, Brown Ranch, ribbon cutting. So, any other announcements? Then, Trecher, please, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Two things. First, as Chair of the Committee on the Environment, I'd like to talk about, there's been a lot of recent discussion on plastic bans, and is our law adequate, is, or is it properly being enforced? The answer is, we do have a ban on plastics, the verbiage is, "All food vendors using any disposable food service ware, food service ware will use biodegradable or compostable disposable food service ware unless they can show a biodegradable or composite product is not available for specific application or does not exist." So, I've done some audits, and I found that there are plenty of plastic straws and coffee lids and whatnot throughout the village and the surrounding areas and various food service dispensaries, and clearly, there's a loophole here with not being available, but that seems, that loophole seems to be closing because there are now biodegradable coffee lids and obviously straws and whatnot. So, Santa Cruz County actually has taken the lead on this, as of January 1st, is starting enforcing plastic bans and is doing it in a gentlemanly manner, but with notifications and education, and we are following their lead, and the city manager's office has taken the initiative to send out letters to the surrounding food service vendors and whatnot to make them aware of this. One thing to note is that a lot of these biodegradable products look like non-biodegradable products, the coffee lids and straws sometimes are now white, they look plastic, so if you see one on the beach, it's not necessarily non-biodegradable, but be it known that we are working on this, we're starting to enforce the law, and the Committee on the Environment will keep a close eye on this, and we'll let you know what the progress is on that. Second item is, some neighbors of mine wanted to know where the funding is for street repair on Fanmar and Terrace Way, and I told them, to my knowledge, it's on the priority list, but it's not very high on the priority list, so I talked to Mr. Justburg about that, and he gave me some interesting numbers. We get about 300K a year in Measure D funds, when all is said and done, and a project like the Diamond Ruby 42nd Street Road Project, its costs over double that, so Measure D is not going to cover a lot of road repair, but the good news is, we are approaching the budgeting month, month of May is when we start really working on the budget, and that's an opportunity for the community to send your emails and letters to your city councilmen, who are very good listeners, and set your priorities, ask what you'd like to see, what your priorities are, because as part of the budgeting, again, things like which roads get fixed first is part of that process, so your input is welcome, and as Trecher, I'd love to see what kind of priorities the community is most interested in, so now's your chance, residents of Fanmar and Terrace Way, and others who want to see their various projects and repair projects being worked on. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like the Planning Commission to weigh in on the CIP, and we've talked about that in the past, but they really haven't done it, but this is a perfect year to do that. They're, they know as much as we do about this town and the streets and sidewalks and what's good and what's bad, and what needs to be done, what's going on, so I really like their expertise also, advice about that. Other staff comments?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, first, I really do, the effort to get our junior guard program to be able to compete at regionals this year was really led by Larry, and I want to congratulate him on getting the ball across the line, and I also really need to acknowledge the help that we received from Central Fire and from Santa Cruz Fire, they really chipped in and helped us, get us where we needed to go, so we've had multiple years of crises in the winter, only to finally come to a solution in the nick of time for our junior guard program, I just hope this one is sustainable this time around, so kudos to Larry for really getting us here, and hopefully, we're not talking about it again next winter at the same time.
It should be noted that Larry gave up some excellent playoff seats for the Santa Cruz Warriors, just to go down to LA to plead our case.
Great job, Larry.
Yeah. The other item I have, and this is just great news, is we received word that the February storms were declared both state and federal disasters recently, which means that our damages, particularly on Park Avenue, which looks like the big one, is going to be reimbursable, so we're going through that process of figuring out what that's going to mean exactly, but we're good news on that.
Good. Any other announcements? Then we'll go on to board commission appointments, we have one. Okay, go ahead, sure.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this, but this also involves Steve Justburg, so I'll mention that Steve and I have been interacting with the sanitation district, and people at Capitola notice that City of Capitola is actively working on the odor problem that emanates around Nob Hill, and there are some things in progress right now, it might take a while, but we are working on it, there are some technical solutions that are being discussed right now, and you'll be apprised of other things as they come up in that regard. Thanks.
And I'm also going to a conference to learn more about these things, so they have sessions on odor control, so. The next item is, we have an appointment to the Commission on the Environment. Liz, do you want to handle that?
I can take it. So there is one vacancy on the Commission on the Environment, the position is Council Member Termini's representative, I believe that there was one applicant, Megan Sixt, I'm probably saying that wrong.
Yes, the one and only.
And so, Michael, this is your opportunity to make an appointment.
Yes, I would like to appoint Megan Sixt to the Commission on the Environment. We sat down and had a great chat, and, you know, her CV is wonderful, and I don't know how these really amazing people wind up dropping in our lap, but thank you very much, Megan, for being there for us.
Thank you very much. If you want to say anything, you're welcome to come up and speak.
I don't have anything to say at this time.
Okay, thank you very, very much.
Welcome.
So, we've made that appointment, so now we'll go on to the consent calendar, these are items that are relatively minor usually in nature and handled under one, with one motion, unless anyone would like to discuss an item separately from the council or a member of the public, so would a council member like to pull an item?
Well, Madam Mayor, I'll move the consent, you know, pending any other questions that come up, but I, just to know that I will be abstaining from B1, but I'll be voting on the rest.
Okay, Jacques, did you have a question?
I just want to.
Oh, we have a motion?
There's a motion.
Is there a second?
A second, that. Okay. I just want to mention that these are joint minutes, and we did this with the library board, and I really would like to congratulate the library board on their work propelling our project, which is going to be a great boon to Capitola and the environment, basically our new library.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ed?
I wanted to pull item B to make a quick comment, so I just have everyone handle that.
You want to do it now?
I can do it now.
Sure.
Yeah. I just, I see that coming up later in our agenda, we're going to be discussing goals and objectives, so I just want to just drop a little seed, we're going to be talking about money, and I just want to point out that although McGregor Park and Stockton Avenue are both wonderful additions to City of Capitola, I just want to highlight that the final price of McGregor Park was $184,000 over budget, and Stockton Esplanade was $158,000 over budget. So as we start thinking about how we're going to spend money and how we're going to allocate money and what things we need, I want to keep in mind that two projects recently went into money that we may have thought we had that doesn't exist.
Thank you, thank you, Ben, good comment. Any other comments? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? And one abstentional?
I abstained on B1.
B1. Thank you, thank you very much. Next item is general government, items 10A.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item tonight is a discussion of the code enforcement protocol for the central village. By way of background, we last discussed this item in October of 2013, when the council reviewed enforcement options for village sidewalk signs and outdoor displays. At the culmination of that meeting, the council directed staff to continue administering a complaint-based code enforcement program, and asked that we lower the fees for sidewalk signs by 50% to increase merchant participation. Late last year, and then again this year, we received council direction to place this item again on a future agenda, and that's why we're here tonight. In terms of sidewalk signs, in 2012, after a number of public hearings and considerable discussion, the council approved an ordinance amendment to allow sidewalk signs in the village. The council determined that the signs must be designed consistent with the sign that was approved by the BIA. These signs do require an over-the-counter administrative permit and an encroachment permit, and to date, we've approved three of the sidewalk signs. Up here on the left, you can see the BIA-approved design, and then the two of the three that have been approved for Paradise Grill and Zelda's. Outdoor displays of merchandise we often also see down in the village, these are allowed if a merchant receives a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission. Staff's aware of only one CUP that's been issued over the years for an outdoor display, there may be more, but the Rainbow Shop does have an active CUP, so the other ones you see out there are likely unpermitted, to the best of our knowledge. So tonight, we offered you two options on how to deal with sidewalk signs and outdoor displays. The first was to continue our current complaint-based code enforcement protocol. We also provided a second option and drafted an administrative policy for your consideration that would initiate proactive enforcement for village sidewalk signs and outdoor displays. Under this suggestion, we would notify all village merchants and provide them with a 30-day grace period to come into compliance. After the conclusion of that grace period, we would have staff go out, take an inventory of the village, and then initiate enforcement actions for any remaining violations. For sidewalk signs that are in the right-of-way, we would ask businesses to immediately remove those signs. If they were either unable or unwilling to do it, staff would remove those signs and store them in the city corp yard. Signs which are located on private property or outdoor displays of merchandise, we'd handle those a little bit differently, we would issue a notice of abatement and then subsequent fines as necessary to compel compliance. If the council did decide to go this option, we would also recommend that you direct staff to bring back an amendment to the fee schedule to establish a recovery fee for signs and other items which are confiscated and stored by the city to offset the costs of the abatement efforts. And I would note that under this particular model, community development could administer a proactive code enforcement approach within our existing work program, if it was limited to sidewalk signs, outdoor displays of merchandise. And so that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Mike?
Just a question regarding the right-of-way. Well, I believe that when we permitted the BIA-approved sign, we allowed that to be on a sidewalk, but I believe we also indicated it was not in the sidewalk proper, but in the, for lack of a better word, the boardwalk area, which is the space where the trees are occupied.
That's right.
And I noticed that although we do have three of these signs that have been permitted, sometimes they're where we told them to put them, and sometimes they're actually blocking the sidewalk, so hopefully, we'll be gentle about not picking that sign up, but more letting them know where it needs to go.
Yeah, in that case, I think it's just a matter of education, those businesses have been very compliant, so I think they would work with us.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure I remembered it properly.
Good questions? Then we will open it up to the public. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Then we'll close the public portion and bring it back. Who would like to say anything about this? Ed?
I'd like to go ahead and, I think I'm the one to put this on the agenda, and the reason I did is, I've spent an inordinate amount of time on this policy, it was the original creation of that first sign. Just a little background on the signs is that in general, there was requests for village merchants to have signs. I believe originally, the Planning Commission was against it, it ended way up to the city council, the city council ended up meeting and coming up with that prototype of a sign that was allowed, was put out to the BIA, and it was received coolly, there was expectations that it would cost up to $1,500 to get a sign, and finally, after three years, one business, I believe, bought a sign, I think it was Paradise was the first one to buy a sign, and at that point in time, Gary Watzel from Paradise was kind enough to release his cost, and what it cost, and it was, cost were nowhere near what that was. Since then, we started to clean up some of the sandwich signs, they were pretty much barricades, is what they were with signs on them, which is what Planning Commission didn't want, residents didn't want, and actually, with the BIA, who was trying to take a new posture as far as branding of the village and making it look clean and not junky, they're not really in favor of those signs. So, this came about because we had a policy that we had pretty much taken in 2013, I didn't realize it was that long ago, we were just going to wait for complaints, and, you know, recent surveys of myself shows that there's like 10 or 11 signs out there that are just not in compliance, people making no effort to get the signs. We even had one applicant that wanted to make a sign different from the one they did, they didn't understand the process, actually went through our Planning Commission and had to have, pay exorbitant fees to have a hearing on a different sign when, was a waste of money. So, what this is trying to do, the reason I brought it here, is we have a great policy, the signs are affordable, there's people that want to invoke that, we only have two, but I believe that I passed out at the most recent BI breakfast, at least nine pamphlets of people who are interested, I don't know if that maybe 50% will perform. I don't know of that maybe 50% or perform, but the message from the BIA, and I don't know if they wrote a letter, did they send a letter that accompanied the file about their support? The Board of Directors are unanimous about they want to see an enforcement program. They don't like that, the cluttering in the village. So this is something that's supported by the BIA. I think it would be a simple policy to invoke. I think the language, I'm totally okay with what's written. And what this does is, this rewards the good behavior of those people that went out, made the investment and bought the signs, at this point, that being just Zelda's and Paradise, and encourages the other businesses to make a like sign and that would be the village sign. The only addition of this is, unfortunately, the council passed this designated sign after much deliberation. At the last Planning Commission meeting, they included some language in the zoning ordinance, which changed it to another option from the sign, which I will bring that back and be strongly against that when it comes. I think what this does is, we have one sign and if you have that sign, it's okay. The idea was not to have a variety of signs, just like saying that you can smoke an 8-inch cigarette, but you can't smoke a 12-inch cigarette. I don't want to make this an enforcement nightmare. So my hope is that when we get the zoning ordinance back to us, we go back to that one sign, if you have that picture on there of the type. The designated sign that was in agreement, there was compliance. Believe me, it was hard to get all the business owners to agree on one sign, but they could live with this. So this is what, if you have this type of sign in front of your business, it's a legal sign. Anything else on the sidewalk would be not in compliance. And it's a simple policy. So I'm in support of this. I appreciate the effort that was made and I guess it's, is that item B or item two? One is-
Two.
Two. Okay, I'm in support of item two to invoke this policy and clean up the village.
And thank you for your concern about this and following this issue because 2012, you know, things go on and, you know, we've seen the progress of it. And you have to stay on top of it or things get away from you.
And as Jacques said, that would be my motion to approve item one.
I'll second.
And I would also encourage everyone to read the sign ordinance really carefully. I think it's too liberal. We're giving away too many signs in this town. So read it real carefully. I think that if we implement that, we're going to be really sorry. So just take a real good look at that. Are there comments about this?
No, except I support the motion.
Any other comments about the motion? Then we have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 10B, review of the fiscal year 17 and 18 goals and objectives.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this item is, this item is on your agenda this evening at the request of Councilmember Bertrand. You'll recall that we reviewed the council's goals and objectives during our mid-year budget review in February. The purpose of the mid-year budget review is to take a pause in the middle of the budget cycle and look at where we are fiscally overall as a city and then look at the goals that staff should use and principles in developing the draft budget for the next fiscal cycle. So that was, that's the purpose behind this process. What we did at that meeting in February was staff identified some potential goals to list out and then the council identified and added a number of other items. It's a little bit hard to see here, but right there, middle of the page is where the council items were added in. So the first ones, ensuring adequate funds are available for the library. We're going to have to be updating our MOUs with the bargaining units next year. Looking at the community grant program in the context of other regional changes to the grant program in other jurisdictions. And then starting the process for mall redevelopment were the ones that staff had listed out and then the council identified. Planning for increased pension costs, listing out some specific recreation goals. Look at some sort of demo training opportunity of our fiscal tool during the budget adoption process. Continue with our website improvements. Identify options for a Forum in Economic Development Committee. Options for council team building. Options for youth council committee. Increased youth participation in committees and continue the public participation efforts. That was on the administration side. On the police department, we focused it down. Staff suggested looking for grants, finishing the emergency operations plan and then looking for opportunities to reintroduce and reinvigorate the neighborhood watch programs and increasing participation in the Capitola on Watch Program, which for those of you who don't remember, that's the program by which users who have cameras around town can register their camera with the police department. Doesn't mean that we will ever necessarily need to use it, but it just lets the police know that the camera is there, so if there is an incident, we know to go ask and see if you have any footage that might help us. In addition, the council suggested adding a goal to have a presentation on CIT training. That's Critical Incident Training, which is an important component of 21st century policing. Deal of helping our officers trained in how to deal with people who are undergoing types of emotional or physical distress. And then really identifying community policing as kind of a core goal for the department at its heart. In Public Works, we listed out looking at our Measure D projects, getting them done, completing and bidding our our design and bidding process for our library, making progress on our street paving projects, and then beginning the design work on the Measure F projects, specifically the wharf and the flume. And council said, reminded staff that we need to prioritize the wharf project as a very high priority and then also identify options to look for funding for senior exercise equipment. And lastly, in community development, we listed out completing our local adoption of our zoning code, updating our green building program and then presenting updates to the medical marijuana ordinance, which we have already done, actually, as community development department goals for the year. And council identified completing the ADA transition plan and then reviewing the inclusionary housing ordinance as goals for the upcoming fiscal year. So that's right now the package that we're working with as we develop the budget. The purpose of tonight's hearing, Councilmember Bertrand, you can add anything if you'd like, would be, I think you wanted to see these sort of all brought back together, what they were looking like and if there was any changes or suggestions or other items the council would like to see added basically to the agenda or the list of things that we'll talk about during the budget cycle. Adam available for questions?
Yes, you're right. I did bring it, I don't have any questions. I'm sorry. Don't want to jump in. But yeah, I did ask for this to be brought back because I thought it would be beneficial to the public to see the complete list and to capture that so that it could be referred to. I think all of us have put, staff and city council have put things on here that we feel are important to the community. In many cases, the items that are put on here are in response to input from the community and I appreciate that input. Of course, I have things that I am particularly interested in, but I'm one of five. So I just want this as our record and as we move forward in the year and in the budget planning process. I appreciate this being considered and these are part of the overall process when we have that review.
And I think one thing that's really good when we have a new council member is to look at our priorities so that they can become familiar with it and we can focus on those things. That during the year, when I first came on the council, I just said, what are we working on? What's the work plan? And it was really helpful to say, we're working on these 10 things. That's what we're going to be following and working on for the next couple of years. It was real clear. We were all on the same page. And I can't tell you how important that is for a council and the Planning Commission and the city and the staff, for everybody to be on the same page, moving in the same direction. There's no way we could have done 41st Avenue if we hadn't been there. So we were all on the same page. We knew what our goal was. We knew what we were doing. We were a team. We were together. We had differences, but we did the 41st Avenue design guidelines. We did a new sign ordinance. We made development easy, cheap, come to town. Open your store. We'll work with you. Auto dealers, everybody. And we're going to be going through a kind of a similar thing with that, with the redevelopment of the mall. So that's why, you know, it's real important for us to pull together as we move forward, you know. Some of us may not be here when that happens in a couple of years, but those of you who are and whatever new council members, pull everybody together at some point. So you are really marching together down the same path with the same big giant goals. Details, you know, you can argue about, but it's really, really important. And staff needs that kind of clarity. They can't, you know, it's real hard to work with a council because someone's going over here and someone's going over there. It's really better to be pretty together. And so what I had put down for us just to kind of focus on, just to make it a smaller list for us. Library, wharf, budget, CIP, ADA plan, zoning code, Grand Avenue path. And those are kind of some of the major things. I think they're just kind of easy to kind of focus on, you know, day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month. I'd also like to add here a little upgrade to City Hall because the upstairs could use a facelift and it could use some natural light. And I talked to Councilmember Termini about this, about, well, could we get skylights there? Could we get some natural light? Can we get rid of those awful lighting fixtures and get some other soft lighting fixtures? Can we get some new workspaces? Or is there some things that we can do that's not going to cost a giant amount of money, but would upgrade City Hall, make it lighter, brighter, airier, healthier, happier, and so forth? So that's my, that's my thought is, I don't know how much money. We have to kind of look at that and see. I've heard there's problems with the roof and maybe not, but to, you know, to do that, I think would make this place for the next five or 10 years, however long we're here, or 20 or 30, we don't know. It would just make it a much better work environment for the employees and I really would like to do that for them. We, you know, we haven't done any upgrades up there since there was a new carpet put in the city manager's office and maybe a coat of paint and and we got rid of the purple dividers and put blue ones. Well, what's the latest in office today? What's the latest look? How are we going to attract somebody to an attractive office? When you have a new finance director, he walks in that office? I don't know, you know. I think we can do a little bit here and there with some white paint or some, I don't know, something to brighten things up. A new window in the city manager's office to get rid of that bad window he has. Just a little work plan of a little bit of improvements, you know, to make the employees' workstations better. I don't know what that is, but let's talk to them and work with them and ask them and put, you know, I don't know, what, $75,000 in the budget? $100,000? I don't know, you know, something so that we can, maybe it's a two-year project. Maybe we do half of it this year and the other half next year. But if we don't start, it's not going to happen. So, Mike.
Well, before I ask a question of staff, Mark, now that you're leaving, we're remodeling your office. In case, in case the mayor was vague in any way, just want to let you know. So.
It's not that bad.
I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear staff's comments on this, if any, and also Councilmember Peterson, who, you know, may want to chime in as well.
Well, you know, what I want to emphasize is that these are, these are the goals that are for the budget for next year. And so they're going to come back in some form and in a lot of cases, it's identifying options for senior exercise equipment. I mean, what we're going to do is we're going to do some research and outline what the cost might be. We can put some options to upgrade City Hall in the same hopper. At the end of the day, what will happen though is that there's not going to be enough money to do everything we want to do. And so then we're going to have to make some strategic decisions. Do I think it's, do I think that the offices upstairs are in need of updating? They are dated. They are certainly dated. I mean, we have been in a position for a while when the question was, were we going to do something more significant here or were we going to continue to occupy this space? So we probably got a bit behind. You know, this space was upgraded a few years back. The community center was upgraded a few years back. The space upstairs is definitely dated. The lighting could be improved. The flooring could certainly be improved. But as soon as you get into games like that, it becomes like a pretty big, it is a pretty big deal. Moving all that furniture out, replacing the flooring, moving it back in, it'll be shocking what the sticker price is on that. So we're happy to do some work. I think there's probably some strategic investment we could make. At the end of the day, there's going to be a price tag associated with it and it's going to come in the trade-off of other projects. So I think that's all I have.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I'll be gone in two years and I would really like to leave this place better than it is today, just personally. I'd like to leave it a nicer work, more professional work environment for all of our employees that we have. They work in, you know, not a very attractive, modern office space. And we can, you know, we can put a little money into that. Doesn't have to, we don't have to move all the furniture or carpet. If we just got lights and light and air in there, it would make a big difference, I think, and a different color paint. But, you know, let's work with them and ask them what they'd like because they, they're the ones that come to work every day and I love them and I want them to have a nice work environment.
Well, Mark already voted.
Any other thing you want to add on the list or, Chris, any questions you have about the priorities and the list, you know, the-
We're going to want the public to weigh in before we?
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course. Anything you want to add?
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with the priorities that we have listed right now. I'm pushing for the youth council aspect. I would understand why it's not a budget priority. That being said, I think there's going to be a way to make it work within the budget and I will continue to push for that.
Good, thank you. This is a public hearing, so, and Peter, you want to speak first?
Well, as a member of the public, I'm just curious about the wording of the very first item, the library. I, I'm a little, I read that and I was, it seemed very open-ended in terms of fund the library regardless. And, you know, I talked to Steve briefly and I said, well, how much money are we saving on this library project? He says, ah, we're on budget. So is there a way we could reword that maybe rather than saying "fund the library project" as opposed to maybe "meet our goal on the library budget" or somehow word that softer?
This list was made prior to the council's putting the stake in the ground. So maybe that rewording is appropriate on that.
Well, I just, I'm listening to what Ed said at the beginning of the meeting, so, McGregor Park and whatnot. You got me nervous.
Appropriately.
This is a public hearing. I'll open it to the public. Would anyone like to speak? If not, we'll close it and bring it back to the council members or, Ed?
Sure, I'll go ahead and weigh in. I share your concerns, Peter. I started reading the list and I never got past the first item that said, "Ensure funds are available for the library" because I realized that this library is going to be significantly over budget. And that means that the goal, I mean, I took that literally. We're going to figure out a way to build that library. I realized that's the goal. And what that means to me is that the other things that are on this list become, you know, not as much of a priority. I mean, I realize we have money for the wharf and I think there's nothing holding that back and I realize Measure D is going to allow us to deal with our payment index and do some, you know, some paving. But aside from that, I mean, I'd get scared when I go down to continue planning for pension costs because we haven't, you're going to bring us back a number on that and I'm not going to be very happy with that number. You're not going to be happy with that number. So I'm, and I realize there's only a certain amount of money that we're going to have to spend, which means that we're going to have to come up with some alternative for how we're going to fund that library. Because it's, we're going to build the library and whatever, you know, it's, Peter, whatever it says there, ensure adequate funds. You know, we're going to have to make that happen. With regards to these other things, I mean, I don't, I could say that I want to put a library in Monterey Park on here, but I'm not going to do that because that money doesn't exist. So I think we all need to really be ready to say, okay, we're all in on the library and, you know, our pension obligations are not going to go away. And, oh, by the way, we're going to negotiate MOU contracts with our employees. So, I mean, I would love to, I mean, I would love to build a brand-new City Hall, but we're not going to go over that battle again. Okay, so I think the message I want to send tonight is, I love these goals and I love the fact that all these things could and work in the city of Capitola, but realizing that we've committed to build this library and realizing that it's going to take some kind of creative effort from our city manager, our finance director, and maybe us to realize how to do all this, maybe this is not a year to be checking all the other boxes.
Thank you. Jacques?
So Ed brings us back to our fiscal situation. I'm sure Peter will have a few more things to say about that. And, you know, I put on that I'd like to have senior exercise equipment. This is an area that has a lot of seniors. We have basketball courts. I don't see any seniors out there. We have a lot of different options, but things that are focused directly on the seniors. And it's being adopted in Santa Cruz, being adopted in San Francisco. It's just on park proscilio and every single intersection, there's exercise equipment. It's really beautiful to see when I drive down there, some of the seniors actually using them. So this is not, and when I first heard about it, it was about three years ago, it was being adopted in Germany. So there's real reasons for these things. Whether we can afford it or not, I don't know. In that regard, I did procure a catalog and gave a copy to Steve so he knows at least some of the options available. But the things that I'm really concerned about that I put on here irrespective of budget issues are things to do with economic development. So I've talked about this ever since I've been on the city council. I was part of the initial economic development committee when I ran two times ago or three times ago, I can't remember. That's one of the things I ran on that we need and we can benefit if we have this as a continual effort, a economic development committee for the city of Capitola. There's many different ways that committee could go, but the main focus of that committee is- go, but the main focus of that committee is to elevate the economic climate of the city, which is beneficial to all. The other thing that I'm very clearly interested in dealing with the police department, there's something here on CIT training, and clearly identifying community policing as a goal. So I am very respectful of the police effort in this city. I've been on multiple ride-alongs, so I'm very respectful of the professional quality of our police force, and I want to keep this at that level. Talking with Rudy, our former chief, and talking with Terrance, our chief currently, I know that training is critical. It's a thing that has to be done on an ongoing basis. It's a thing that kind of tells our police department, we respect their abilities, and we want to make them even better. So I think this is the kind of thing that we need to do, and I think our community wants this kind of thing. We want community policing. We want to know our police department. We want to know that they respond to our needs, and we also want to know that they understand us. So those are the kinds of things I feel are very important. A review inclusionary ordinance, it's another thing I put on there, and that has to be developed a little bit. But the idea here is to help in regard to providing housing for those who are less able to afford market-based pricing. And as I stated earlier, there's an element of our society that are homeless, but one of the main things in terms of homelessness that a lot of people understand is you keep people in homes. If you could keep people in homes, they don't become homeless. So you provide, that's what the community is starting to go to, you provide options so that people will stay in their homes. And I'd like to see this city take leadership in that. So those are the things I put on here, and that's why I think they're important.
Thank you. Kristin, you want to speak?
Yeah, just looking at the list, it looks slightly daunting in considering getting all of these things in the budget, but then in further looking into it, some of these things, it might be worth it to, at some point, divide them into things that we actually need to budget for, and things that we just have goals for in this fiscal year, because things like continuing public participation efforts, or identifying options for council team building, we don't need to put those in the budget if I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is my first budget cycle on the council. So it might be beneficial at some point to divide these up into things that actually need to be given consideration in the budget process, and things that we just want to keep on our radar in this fiscal year.
So I think that's a really good point. You know, one of the things we tend to do with these, with the council budget goals, is actually try to hang a cost next to them before, when we get into the budget cycle. So you're not deciding that this is the list. Yeah, when we adopt the budget and we put, you know, dollar figures next to things, that's where you end up making the decision. And some of the things, the cost is, you know, really, it's just work program item. The cost is effectively zero. So it's helpful in a sense that it's a nice way to kind of have the council come together, as Stephanie said, and identify what are we gonna work on. And some of the things have costs, and in some cases, it's just staff time, or it's just council time. And so that will be part of the process when we get into the budget cycle. The point that Treasurer and Councilmember Badorf made about the language of that first bullet up there, said, before it said, ensure adequate funds are available for the library construction. I think Councilmember Termini put it right, is that that bullet was written before, I think, we'd identified the budget. The other, the other piece of that, and I have to apologize, that was written, I think I was the one that wrote that. And what I was really thinking about in that case was a lot of the behind-the-scenes efforts that go into making sure that we have $13 million available to build the library on time. So for example, there's coordination with our library JPA, and making sure the issuance of bonds is such that we have the proceeds available on time, that the city goes through whatever process and decision-making we do, if we're gonna go out to debt, if we need to issue RFPs, and get sign-off from lenders, and actually get the loan and have it. So I'll be honest, I was thinking about it in some ways more as the kind of the administrative side, like make sure we have the money when we're ready to spend it. But I think that probably it's a fair critique of the way that language was written, and so I'd just suggest a change up there, that we say, ensure that the budgeted funds are available for library construction, because we do have a budget, and we do need to stay on budget, as I think Councilmember Badorf pointed out. We need to be very aware of that.
One thing we need to do, too, it's kind of a peripheral issue, is we need to get back to the community groups and decide which ones each one of us wants to follow. And the other process didn't really work, because everybody forgot about it, I think. So I think just, put out a master list, and just check which ones you want to follow, you know, pick three or four you don't know anything about, but you're interested in, and then let's see if we can, I'll be happy to compile them, and then we'll know what our little assignment is for the next year. Follow those groups, go to their meetings, whatever, you know, get the information you need, and so forth. But, yeah. Or if you only have time for a couple, that's fine.
And I can say... Madam Mayor, that our city manager sits on the library joint powers board, and is helping ensure that we have the money in the bank to build the library. So his attendance on that board is pivotal.
And to Councilmember Harland's point, I can get the master list of our grants out to the council in the Friday update, and so if anyone wants to sign up for the review...
We had a seniors council meeting today, and we had about $12,000 extra in one-time funds, and we looked at their requests before us for $3,000, $2,000, $4,000, you know, $6,000, you know, and we divided it up. And it was interesting, because there was one group that had not met its performance to this date, and yet they were asking for more money that has to be spent by June. And so one of the staff persons said, you know, I don't really, I'm not, I don't know if we're really comfortable giving them an extra sort of a grant. It's April, between now and June, when they haven't met their performance goal to April, as far as number of clients or service hours, or whatever it was that they were measuring. So if we give them more money, are that's gonna, are they gonna be able to catch up in that amount of time? But anyway, it's very, very interesting, you know, and the people that, you know, that are, that work in this field, and the seniors, they're totally aware of all these groups, and what they do, and how they spend their money, and they're all, you know, very, very efficient. And, you know, there's nobody on there that I have seen, you know, in my time here, that was really, you know, really should be dropped, you know, that really is not performing. And they're all performing, you know, very, very well. So, good, we'll get back on that. And make it fun, you know, pick some, pick a couple that you enjoy doing, and don't make it, you know, a drudgery or anything like that, because then you won't enjoy doing it. Okay, anything else on this? Any other comments? Is there, anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to move to accept this report. I don't think we need a...
We need an action?
Motion, yeah. Just receive the report.
To provide direction? Is there any direction? We can just have a motion to accept it?
Yeah, I move to accept this report. Second?
Any other discussion?
Just by way of clarification, I did add, based on the mayor's comments, identify options, upgrade city admin offices as one of the, one of the items that we'll talk about during the budget cycle. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. I don't see any other business tonight, so...
One last thing, I forgot when we gave the check to Operation Surf, that Britannia Arms and Paradise Grill fed the soldiers, the wounded veterans that were on Operation Surf. They fed them both days, and the day after, a really nice dinner at Paradise. So all the merchants in the village really stepped up on this one.
Tony, are you comfortable if we would take a consensus on having the planning commission review the CIP, or not, because it's not on the agenda, but just as a...
We plan on doing that.
Okay, that would be great. Can you put it on their agenda, so they can talk about it and review it?
Yes, absolutely.
There are really a lot of expertise on that committee that would be really helpful for us. Any other public comments or announcements? Then, thank you very much. We're adjourned. Is this a record?
It's a record. No, 20 minutes is a record.